All right, thank you.
They're growing up fast.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending the Town of Beekman's Planning Board meeting this Thursday, June 15th, 2023. If you will please stand, take notice of the exits in the back, down the hall, on the right, and here in the back. And now if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And remain standing for a moment of silence for all of our first responders, service personnel, active and veterans.
God bless the Ukraine.
Yes.
Yes.
Amen.
Somebody's got to stand up to Russia. I'm glad they're doing it.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. And we slide here.
Get your hands in the air.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, did the board have a chance to review the minutes?
The problem is that Fay wasn't here in May.
Okay.
So you might need to wait until Rob gets here to have a proper quorum because she's going to have to abstain on May's minutes.
We'll add that in later then.
Is that a regular procedure?
Yeah, I wasn't here.
I'm serious when I ask that.
Yes.
I know to look at the minutes.
All right, so this evening we have three public hearings on the agenda. When I open up the hearing, if you'd like to talk, please address the board from the podium. You'll be speaking into the mic. Say your name and your address so that it can get recorded by Pete. And typically we confine the applicant to three minutes. And if you have a lot to say, I'll be flexible to a point as long as there isn't redundancies there. The purpose is so that everybody can be heard per hearing. That's the only purpose, not to prevent you from speaking. So with that said, Semco, are you here today?
No.
Oh, look at that.
Oh, boy.
All right.
Oh, boy.
Michael's here. How do you like that? I've had to announce this hearing three times. There it is. All right.
Okay. Good evening, Michael Westby, Westby Associates Consulting Engineering. This application's actually been on the agenda quite a while here. There's a couple of things we've been kind of trying to tie up on the backside relative to other agencies. One is the Dutch Department of Public Works has given us an okay to build this curb cut, you know, 20, 15 years ago when we originally worked on it. But we had to get them back out there. Some of the drainage change and things like that. So that meeting hasn't heard. We've got the records from him relative to what we're proposing. He's okay with the entrance, but we're going to do a little drainage work on that to assure the changes that have been made by the county are okay for this project down the road. Also, there's a weapon that shows up on the map now as for partial access that actually wasn't there during the first run.
Is it delineated on the map this?
Yeah, it's shown. I can kind of see it on that. There's a solid black line here.
Okay.
So that kind of outlines it. It has the flag. We're going to get surveyed. So once we have that on there tight, then we'll have that back to you for consideration depending on where all the flags are. So one thing I guess we could talk about are trees.
Precious. Isn't that the word? Precious?
I was on the bad note.
My precious?
So just to make things like really super clear, when this was originally approved, there were people that went up into the site and actually removed, except for right along the edge of the road, removed a ton of trees out there where the houses were supposed to go, where the septic's were going, well-located places. So there is not a lot of trees, if any, old growth where we're proposing these through the house and the septic areas. It's just not there. So I think one of the things is, you know, it's going to be tough. We're going to have to walk through there and try and show you what's not there, but there's not the map in those locations. So again, I know that there was some terms regarding trees and tree removal and things such as that. This happened before the current applicants, owners even had it. This was prior to them. So, you know, nothing to hang them upon, but you know, as part of this too, there was some, there was a request to show some trees providing a buffering from Pleasant Ridge Road. I think that may came through the variance due within 100 feet.
What was the variance for?
The variance was to allow work construction, AKA within 100 feet of Pleasant Ridge Road. Pleasant Ridge Road is a scenic highway. So we had to go to the zoning board to get relief from that. So we did successfully.
So it was 100, 100 feet, right? So the entire view shed buffer, you've been given a variance for?
Yes.
And what is the wording of that variance? You have it with you?
I don't, but it was very open-ended.
Open-ended?
Yeah. Really in consideration of taking it back before this planning board and giving you the flex to show additional trees or what you ever felt was great to give some buffer for that point.
So what was the nature of the hardship?
The backup property is heavily steep slopes.
Right.
And we know prior to Pleasant Ridge it goes up. So we tried to work out driveway entrances, the septic's, the houses, and the wells to a point that they meet a lot of other requirements and stay out of the steep slope. So unfortunately that was done within that 100-foot area. It's the only area we had to work in.
And I saw, I was there this afternoon, where those flags are is the driveway next to that telephone pole?
Yes.
That's it?
Yes, sir. The reason the variance was given, open-ended.
If you could, you can come up and speak at the mic.
Yeah, for the purposes of the microphone.
Yeah, so that you can get, you can get recorded and be on the video.
The reason the variance was given, open-ended, because up well into the 100-foot to the house off the road is just septic and lawn. So we're not, we're not doing structures or anything like that within that 100-foot buffer. So it's open-ended so that we could put our septic's in and as minimal of structure or movement as possible for that. So that's the only reason it was left open-ended.
What does this dark patch represent? The dark line?
Am I right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is actually the extent of the cross-access easement.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, it's not only just a shared entrance, it's going to be shared all the way back.
So that's the driveway and the telephone poles to the left of that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you've got your septic there on the left, and where's the backup?
There. Which one was it?
Oh, is that the septic? Oh, so that, yeah, so the septic is right there to the left of that, right?
Right, there's that.
And then you, and then you have your backup septic, I guess, somewhere.
Right. Yeah.
Do you see it on there?
Yeah.
Oh, you do. All right. And that's why all those trees have to come down there in the front. Are those the proposed trees that you're putting there?
Yeah. Yeah, we show them on the bottom of each one, collecting trees here.
Okay. And on the left of the, but you have none right off of Beekman-Popey Road. I mean Pleasant Ridge Road, none.
Left, where the road cuts in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be kind of a valley.
Yeah.
It's a pretty heavy cut. So I would imagine it's a driveway and then it's going to be, I mean, if you want them on top of the slope to, you know.
And you've got that drainage swale that comes down to that, the culvert?
On the backside.
That goes onto the road?
Yeah.
All right. Pete?
Yeah, Michael. Excuse me, what's your name?
Floyd.
Floyd on Peter.
Roy.
Huh?
Roy.
Roy. We had a, we had a meeting of the fire advisory board last week. And the purpose of the board is to review items that come, obviously from a pragmatic point of view, okay? That come, that are coming before, before the town. There was a discussion about the shared driveways where they branch off to approach each house. Okay, from an operational point, okay, the plans that I saw, the driveway cutoffs really is staggered. And it'd be most efficient from a operational point of view if the driveway came up and you would have to, you're going to have to make, what I want to say, a cut, a bank cut.
Yeah, put a hammerhead up in there for them to put their trucks in.
So that it would be a square, a regular T.
Right.
And so that that way then if there is a problem on either one house, there's an area with a level enough grade to operate the various pieces of equipment. Plus not only, also the fact of turning equipment around to get out and drive downhill rather than backing out on.
It's actually not that far to back it up and put it down, but I understand a flat level area to put their tail lights down and work fire from there. So that would be, that would be made accessible to work from.
All right, so that would be, that would be an amendment or a change in the plan.
That's what we have in there.
So what we have is we come up and we flare up. What you're asking is take that flare and push it up against the hill if you have more of a T so you can move your equipment.
Not more of a T, 8T, Mike.
All right, well, I understand. And now what we're doing is we're pushing everything back, right? Because we're, you know, we're grading up, we're pushing that back. So it's going to push the grading and disturbance further back. So you need more cutting. It is what it is, but we can do it.
It will square up, yeah. That's enough.
That's good. Thank you.
Listen, we don't have a problem with doing this. We just need to get it done.
We didn't, we didn't even think we were coming back.
Maybe?
No, well, yeah, because it was on the, it was on the agenda for three months, the hearing.
Does that play any question?
Must say it got confusing, I'm sure, to the public, you know? But so now you got, you got a question for you, Floyd.
Floyd.
Roy.
Roy.
So is there any reason why you need to clear all of the trees off of the road within that 100-foot?
We're not to clear off of you.
You're not? Okay. All right, good.
I don't know. I don't know who went up there. But everyone up there, what's cleared already, there's something to clear. Anything else, it's all shot over the last 15 years.
Yeah, if it's gone, it's gone.
The dead stuff that's falling down is going to be cleared or already fell down. It's dead ball up there.
Right.
And most of the dead ball came down right where the driveway started.
Perfect.
So to go down, look at this or, you know, walk in it with ticks and everything, I didn't stand on it. But soon it's got to get cleared and then. The two sites and the two fields, you know, the drainage field, haven't cleared already. I would have to use it though, probably even 10 years ago, not more.
I think what would help is if you're going to send the surveyor out to pick up the wetland flags anyway, have them pick up all the limits of previous clearing. That way you can know what trees that are shown on the map actually are or are not there anymore. And then that would help the board understand how many trees actually are going to still come out, you know, because there is a stand along Pleasant Ridge. So which ones of those might be coming out as well?
You can't go along that ridge on Pleasant Ridge, there's no reason to come out because you can't believe septic that close, you know, septic set down.
And you have the, that drainage coming down.
It's blending some, if it's okay with you guys, is the blended some debris in when the trees still remain there.
Yeah.
All right. Listen, everyone wants privacy.
Yeah.
All right? No one wants to look up at the hill and, you know, and see everything that's going on. So, yeah, we're probably doing a lot of all landscaping in that because if you ever seen it, that places I've done throughout this town, you know, the last 20 projects I've had, we do landscaping, we do everything, you know, we put houses together.
Very nice.
All right, it's just the way we do something.
That clears up a lot of misconceptions. So, yeah, we just weren't.
I know I spoke with, I did previously about this and you, I don't know, you or someone else had said, put white pine in there. I'm not going to put white pine in. You know, I'll put spruce up in some Nelson. I'm not going to put white pine in.
Well, they're diseased too now. There's a disease going around taking them out, the white spruces.
Yeah, no, I just don't hear spruce in there or cedar or something like that.
Yeah. So Dan, what in the way of, how does that work with delineation of what he's going to keep and not and what he's going to plant?
That's part of the, part of the problem with the process is that the planning board, when reviewing a water resource permit, has to conduct a public hearing on the water resource permit. So as this has been kicked down the road, we figured that it would be good to incorporate both the subdivision public hearing, which keeps getting adjourned, with the water resource permit. If, for whatever reason, the planning board was to say we can close the public hearing on the subdivision and then we get the delineation of the wetlands and we find out that there's disturbance to the buffer, then we have to open up another different public hearing on the water resource permit. So it seems to me it would be logical to, you know, if you're going to get that surveyed and get it on the map, get it to us as soon as you can. And then the board could either adjourn this meeting to a date when you know you're going to have that for the next submittal. Or, you know.
Well, I'm not sure. I have to talk to the surveyor.
Okay. He has done it to our call.
All right.
Good thing we do it during this meeting, right?
Well, yeah, I mean technically still open it up to the public to hear if there's any comments from the public at this point.
This will be their first opportunity.
No, they've had opportunities before.
I forgot. Oh, yeah, right. I remember.
September, I think, of last year.
We could act on the subdivision and have a public hearing for the other water issue later, correct?
If we showed the subject.
If we decided to.
If you, if you wanted to, yes, you could. But what you'd probably want to also do is, you know, have the applicant waive any kind of, because once you close the public hearing, there's 62 days until the board has to make a decision.
Okay.
So.
So we would be wise maybe to do it together.
Yeah, because it's also an environmental issue, so you got to do your seeker associated with it as well.
The only thing I want to say is if you go ahead and submittal, you give me one lot per area. If only one house should be able to have that. One lot, the other lot, three and clear, right?
Right, but with that lot, we don't know what the impact of it is. Building will be, we have a hard fast one.
Yeah, you'd be segmenting the project at that point, which you can't do, so.
And we could advertise for upcoming meetings.
We could just incorporate it in there in your, in your presentation. You could just incorporate it in, this is a public hearing for subdivision and for water resource permit. And then you can talk about the disturbances within the buffer, if there are any, I don't know. We don't know yet, right?
But we could advertise.
Based on the GIS, it looks like there's going to be.
So based upon that, we could advertise for it so that next month we're.
We wouldn't have to, my point is, is that I'm saying if we, if we verbally state it at the next, you know, whenever that meeting back gets back open, that that satisfies a requirement because we're talking about the subdivision and the water resource permit. I don't think you'd have to re-advertise.
Excuse me.
Now, if, if the board wanted to close the public hearing in the subdivision, then you, of course, you'd have to advertise, send out mailers to all the neighbors again for the next public hearing. Right now, they have the ability to adjourn it to a date specific, which is what's been happening, but, but we need the information.
Yeah.
Can we put this off at 30 days?
Well, you'd have to submit within, you know, two weeks or whatever.
Yeah, all the way I would say is, you know, adjourn. Next time the meeting, it's a function, you know, and you've got to locate it on plan. If we don't, we'll come back and explain it because it's not there yet.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's up to the board, you know.
Everybody else has a board.
Well, we still have to have comments from the public. I don't even think we've opened the public hearing yet.
We didn't.
No, we did have comments, we had questions, no comments when it first opened.
Right. But there's new information now and, yeah, we need to, yeah, we need, we need to, I just need to open it and have the public address. We do have one comment. No, actually, that's not related to this application.
It is.
It is.
There was a written comment, yeah.
So I have a written that applies to this and there may be other people here. So with that, all right, I'd like, I'd like to request a motion.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there anybody in the public here now that would like to speak about this application? Come once, come twice, okay. I have one written.
I have one to hear. Do I need to go with that?
How you doing? Great. For an emailed comment for this hearing. Should it leave?
Leave it to her.
Should, from here or from the podium? Does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay.
Okay, so there's a public comment from Bill Crane, who was unable to attend. Because of my spine surgery, I cannot attend tonight's meeting to give public input. If I could, I would ask the board if the Pleasant Ridge development, Kemco, should be allowed. It's on a steep slope. Thanks, Bill.
Okay. Any other comments from the public?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second.
You have to set a date specific on this one. And it's, it's your discretion to.
If we can get the surveyor out there and do the work, I'd like it a lot for the next month's meeting.
Are you in a rush? Do you want it, do you want to take a chance and?
I'd like to.
Okay. So then.
Go ahead, excuse me.
Go ahead. No, it's up to you, Pete.
I was going to suggest August.
He wants it, yeah, he says he's going to have to survey in July. It's up to you.
Well, they only got two weeks, they only got two weeks to get it done.
So.
Is that correct?
Yeah. The submittal, the submittal deadline will be July 3rd. So.
Did you hear what Pete said?
Yeah.
Well, you only have two weeks.
I don't know, I know, and I mean, if you're going, we're going August 8th.
I feel it's a safe hedge.
Yeah.
Because we don't have two weeks if we don't get the surveyor, we're not.
Okay.
They agree with you. August 8th?
August 8th?
Yes.
Yeah, 3rd.
Makes sense.
August 17th.
Okay.
So the adjournment would be specific to August 17th, 2023.
Very good.
The motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Thank you. All right. Appreciate it. So next on the agenda is Active Dog.
Brian, were you able to bring in the white, the certified's there, the whites? Or is it the?
I have two.
Okay. Can you, can you give those to Alitha and she can possibly cross-check them quick?
Oh, no, the greens, okay.
Yeah.
I have them.
Because the greens don't always come back. So we really need the whites to show proof that you made the attempt to send them out.
Okay, I scanned them all in, so no problem.
Okay.
Dollar general, you're doing nice, didn't you?
Didn't it? That is our good work.
It is a good work.
I think.
I agree completely.
They're doing nice business, too.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Brian Hillenbrand, I'm the civil engineer for the project representing Active Dog, which is located on Devoeville Road. It's 350-plus acres, which received approval last year for a dog hiking business that has been operating there since. And we're back in front of the board this year to expand the parking areas to provide more parking, better circulation. The parking areas are gravel, basically a duplicate of what we did last year with gravel access drives, gravel drop-off areas that are fenced and gated for, for dog delivery to the site. As far as stormwater goes, I mean, all the new work is all gravel. There's no concerns for runoff. There's no tree removal and there's no new wetland buffer disturbance. Part of the application is to request up to 25 vans a day, where previously we were capped at 18 as part of a condition of the site.
I'd like to say thank you for coming back before us for that. You know, it very easily could have been, you know, ignored, that part of the process. So I have respect for that. And I understand that the parking, the parking lot is smaller than what you originally planned for, so.
It is, yeah. What's constructed, kind of lessened in the past of even things like snow removal. You know, we're going to modify the gates, put double gates so snow can be removed, vans could be easily circulated without having to do lots of K-turns and things. The area we're proposing to do drop-off is flatter. It's a meadow now. And it makes, it makes more sense to have it in that area. So both will be utilized, both parking and drop-off areas for, for access to different parts of the property. So we can have different groups hiking throughout the land without crossing paths.
The new drive.
Yeah, you know, there's a blow up on one of the next sheets. You can go to the, yeah, that's, that'd be a little bit better representation. And then you can just pan that down a little bit. You can, the existing areas on the low, on the bottom there. Maybe zoom out just a tiny little bit.
Right, so the existing.
There you go.
On the bottom in the shaded area is what we're proposing.
I noticed, Brian, I noticed in the comments that there was a comment about a Knox box which would give the emergency responders access. And it said that you would contact the, or obtain it from the fire department. Actually, it will be up to you to obtain it. You can contact the Fire District Secretary and get the necessary information.
Okay.
On the purchase or from.
Right. Okay, understood.
All right. Does the board have any more questions for the architect before we open the hearing?
All to the public.
Okay. Would one of you like to make a motion to open?
I'll make the motion to open this for public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to approach the podium, sir?
Yeah.
No, thank you.
I'm living in Frenchtown, that's the fourth. I live on 31 Daisy Drive, which is off of. I live on 31 Daisy Drive, which is off of Lyeth Lane, which is off Davisville Road. Daisy and Lyeth are probably one of two private roads that own the town. I've been here since 1968, I've been on that hill since, for 40 years. We had a little issue a couple months ago, a few of the dogs came through my property and they got loose. And I had called the owners to let them know that I had their dog, that they find out that they were on a hike with, this, this is the first time I ever found out there was a hiking company or a dog hiking company going on. So we had a few dogs, I talked to the owner right here. My property butts up against this, I don't know, the area view here, but I'm agreeing and who is the hot pig there, do you guys even see that?
No.
He went through all the work, I can grab it.
Oh, yeah.
I'll show the other board.
That's my house. This is my house, yeah, the property berths right here at the... That's your property? Yeah. So the gentleman is, is gonna come and look at the property tonight where he could possibly remove the trail.
That's his house. And here's his property.
Put a fence. Keep the dogs away from that section of the property, because I'm worried about the safety of the dogs and people out shooting back there. I have a shooting range back there and they love that. So I just wanna make sure that there's people safe back there, that, you know, the property is part of the margin. I have rope around the outside of the property and stating that I have a shooting range here and they're gonna shoot.
This is stated so.
So I just worry about people getting attacked there.
Right.
As I'm shooting, of course, I don't want anybody to get hurt.
Right.
And, and obviously if there's a lost dog, so Frenchtown...
Nice meeting you.
If the dogs are lost, if the dogs...
Yeah.
We just wanna make sure everybody's safe back there, that's all.
Understood.
So if you can move the trail, that would be great, if you could put a fence, that's even better. You know, like I say, there's a ravine back there that kind of separates our property, so it's kind of, and my, my property is also on the border.
Okay.
So it's very easy to tell who starts and who doesn't, you know, at their property. So I just, you know, he's gonna come over tonight, he's gonna take over and see what he should do.
Peter Poltrack is asking where the railroad was on, on that map.
The railroad?
Yeah.
Uh, that's, uh, that's at the very bottom of the prison, and we are, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to see a blow up on his property.
Yeah, we're way above the road, we're up on the mountain.
This is Peter Poltrack.
Let's, let's take a look at the map real quick.
Go ahead. It seems to me that those dogs covered a tremendous amount of dirt.
So railroad is not actually on this map, but if I had a call...
It shows, it shows things over here. And I'm just thinking, I wanted to see where we are and...
All right, well, I'm done.
You're done, all right, it was nice meeting you.
Thanks.
Oh, okay. On your first sheet, okay. Can you, can you, can you bring this to the first sheet? Let's see, I can probably, yeah. You can go down a little bit, Peter.
This, this is active dog here.
See where that, see how the big man nails it down?
Yeah. Yep. This is active dog.
Okay.
That's kind of, that's where they are.
And so...
This is the railroad, this is the railroad right here.
Where's your flag home?
Front post on the other side.
The development, these guys right here.
It's, it's where on here?
Obviously, right around there is where it's at.
These are the, these are the seven lots.
We're a little left there where your camera is, right, right where the nits is. No, 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 left, now, right there.
And that's where the...
Yeah, that's my property.
Is there anyone else in the community who'd like to comment?
Was there a problem with, was there a problem with the dogs per se, other than just the fact that they were loose?
Uh, no, they weren't, they weren't vicious or anything like that, and it's just that, you know, my dog all mopped up at first and, I mean, you know, he was thirsty, it was a hot day, so I didn't even wonder, I didn't know if they were back or...
Would you like to close the hearing and have Active Dog comment about this at all?
Or adjourn? Oh, yeah. We sent out the 239 referral, so we can't take preliminary action, so...
Okay.
We could do that or, or if they wanted to waive the 62-day. Could do it that way, too. It depends, I mean, did you, did you ask if there were any other comments from the public?
I did.
You did? I missed that, I'm sorry.
Can I say something?
Yep, please.
Just to, to the record, Frank was the fifth, I'm the son of the property owner, grew up there. I think this is an issue between neighbors and that they should work it out amicably between each other. And they are actively trying to do that and that will be worked on tonight. And I think we should leave it at that. If there are issues, I'm sure my father or the property owner of 350 acres will come up here and say something.
Right.
In a future meeting, but I think we should leave this to neighbors trying to amicably work things out and be...
It's a beautiful thing.
Yes.
Yeah, really is, it's the way it should be.
Right.
Appreciate that.
Yep. We did ask for comments prior to that meeting for the 239 referral.
So what are we doing?
We're closing the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe we might want to just keep the public hearing open to possibly address county planning comments.
Okay.
And on the next meeting, we'll have 239 comments, it'll probably be a little concern, but don't know. And at that point in time, if we close the public hearing and if it is ready for action, we can consider that at that point in time.
We can approve the sketch at that time? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, the public hearing until the next, what is it?
July...
July 17? Something like that?
I got July 20.
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever it is, July what, 28?
20th.
I'll second your thing.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Obviously, uh, sorry, Eric Bliley, owner of Active Dog, may I ask, you know, the all the mailings, the reason I bring this up is I have three kids that are six, we're going to Upstate New York, the 19th to the 23rd, about a seven-hour drive for us.
Right.
Gonna get a lot of hot water with my wife.
Right. Would you need to be here? Would he need to be here?
If it's a public hearing, I assume I'd have to be here, but I guess my, I'm new to this, my question is that if all, all our mailings were sent out correctly, why do I have to push it another month, I guess is my question.
The attorney is, there's a lead agency that has been, had the opportunity to reply.
The county.
It's not, it's a general municipal law, just for clarification, it's not a lead agency issue. When you're within 500 feet of state land or anything like that...
Yep.
There's a process where the county has an opportunity, we have to give them that opportunity to comment on the project. This board can't take action by our own town code without having that county response back in.
So last year when we were here, they responded?
Yes, they did.
Okay, and then Dewey, I guess my next question is, obviously, I, sorry, I'm new to this, can it be done with them before the next meeting, like, can they do this outside of this realm or it has to be July 20th, we have to come back and...
That's when this board meets, it's July 20th, so...
But is it necessary that he be here?
No, you have good representation, so...
I was just, this is my life, right, so...
Yeah. We'll call it, we'll FaceTime you in, that's all. Yeah, something, something happens, we'll, and we'll put you up on the thing.
Yeah, that'll be pretty.
Yeah, all right? If you have your bathing suit on, you might want to just have a shower or something.
Just, so addressing any outstanding county comments could not be a condition of approval?
We can't, this board by our town code cannot take preliminary action without having the county comments in our hands.
No, I have no action that would, is closing the public hearing at that level of action or that plain action would be...
It forces the, the shot clock. Right, so the, the only way to avoid that would be if you waived the requirement of this board having to make a decision within 62 days of closing of the public hearing.
Okay, understood.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the alternative is you can close the public hearing, can I, if the board chooses to do so. And if there's something in the 239 letter that you feel, you know, you'd like to reopen the public hearing on the next date, you can do so, but the problem is you won't be able to give enough time for comment or people who want to come here. So I think, you know, maybe leaving it open would, would allow the public at least notice that they can make comment. I, it's up to the, up to the board, but I think that's probably the best way to go.
Uh, which way is...
Leave it open.
To leave it open?
Yeah. And then wait for the 239 comment, come back to county and then close the public hearing and take action. The next meeting. Mr. Bliley?
You're not losing, we're not losing, the applicant is not losing any time by that action.
That's correct.
And we'll also be able to vote accordingly on, on any sketch approval, et cetera. So I, I don't see a downside, except for your anxiety of not being here.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think you should have any anxiety. Yeah, and if you could do something about mine, I'd appreciate it as well, that'd be great.
All right, so, Fay, did you make a motion?
I did, I made a motion to adjourn.
It's up to me to...
To the 20th, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Of July.
Of July.
Correct.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep, all right.
Thank you.
And don't, don't make the wife angry.
Try hard.
That'll be, that'll, that will, I'll put that in the resolution for you, so you have to, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Boy, that business is doing good, 18 to 25, nice. Yeah, I know.
Smart man.
He did well.
Good evening.
Take care.
Have a great night.
You too, it's nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you, my family, you're right there.
I did.
Was it good?
Always good. No, I don't think so.
How are you, Mrs. Massey? My wife and I were taking pictures of you last week.
I took beautiful.
You really came out beautiful.
I'll just take pictures.
I mean, really was.
Taking care of a lot of bees there.
Please.
Good evening, my name is Michael Berta, I'm the architect for the project for the applicant. Got that one? We're here for continuing the public hearing on the, on the project, and I think we're gonna talk tonight about the water resource part of the application, agricultural, as well as continuing on with it. Little brief update is we are hoping to have the Health Department approval tonight, but unfortunately, we don't seem to have it. So we've had the applica, the application into the Health Department, we've gotten one round of comments from them, we've replied to their comments and we're just now waiting for them to finish their review. So we anticipate that any day now. The last meeting we had asked, or I was asked to, to go through and locate all the existing large trees and on your plan, I just gave you, you could see that where all the trees are located. As well as, on that is the amount of disturbance that's being done with everything within the 50-foot buffer. So I'm talking about that for a second. You can see I've included the breezeway, the, there's a small walkway we're putting in, the water line, which is in the buffer, as well as the new patio that we'll be putting on the main house and the pool that will be going behind the main house. So you'll see there's 1,746 square feet of disturbance and that's also adding a little extra for overcut. Now, one thing we are doing is we're reclaiming back 558 square feet of existing asphalt that we're turning back into lawn area. So we have, at the end of the day, we have approximately about 1,200 square feet of actual disturbance.
That's all specific to the water resource buffer, right?
Yeah.
And we're waiting for Board of Health approval?
Yes, yeah, I was anticipating it to have it for tonight's meeting so we could come in with the letter and say, here we go, but unfortunately, it didn't happen.
The new spruce trees that you're gonna install at the road, how many new trees are you putting in there? I drove by today, I don't think you need any.
I would agree with you.
I prefer to see no trees, no new trees and as a result, it would increase the line, traffic line assault. There's, with the trees that are existing, I don't think, I, I just don't, personally, I don't think that you need to, there needs to be anything to soften anything up.
Especially if it creates a blind spot, if that's what you're alluding to.
Right. It's a busy corner.
Yeah, if it creates a blind spot, that's, that's more important, isn't it?
Yeah.
Actually, what that need, road needs is a speed bump to slow up, to slow the trucks down.
Slow the trucks down, yeah.
And they keep hitting their, I was over there the other day and they just kept hitting their Jake breakers.
Yeah. I mean, that's the, the flowers are beautiful, the blue, what kind of flower is that, by the way? Don't even know, yeah, and then you have those multicolored flowers are gorgeous there to the right side.
So where are we at with this?
I think, yeah, just for the record, this was adjourned to this month partly as a result of one adjacent property owner that was not notified and...
Right.
And that person has been formally notified, for the record, so...
And I believe there's one comment, one written comment from Mr. Crane, so...
There is.
What we'll do is we'll open the hearing first. All right, we'll reopen it, all right, can I have a motion?
I'll move to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alitha, would you like?
Public comment comes...
Public comment comes from Bill Crane. If the board would please allow the breezeway on the Masson property to go around the beautiful cherry tree, so the tree can be saved.
Alright, so what we can do at this time is, close, and then answer that. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public about this application?
Seeing none.
Dan, any reason to keep it open?
It sounds like you're close with the Health Department, so.
I, I, I know the answer to this question I'm about to ask, but being that we are very close to the Health Department, instead of making my client have to wait an entire month, is there any way that we can do a conditional that we bring the Health Department approval in to satisfy the town engineer, that we may not have to wait the next month?
Well, what we traditionally do is, the board would authorize me to write a resolution for their consideration for the next month.
Gotcha.
So.
No, sign it.
Had to ask.
Yeah, it'll, yeah. We're saving time, I think, regardless with that, with that issue left.
We will, we will absolutely have the Health Department by next meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, did you want to speak about the cherry tree?
Yeah, we actually looked at it, and without doing something very unnatural with the breezeway, bringing, cutting further into the driveway area, and bringing it into the front of the house, there's no way to save the cherry tree.
That's, had that nice, it's the red leaved.
Yeah, it's the one way next to the house.
Yeah.
We, we even talked about having to get to limit up a little bit, but by the time you did all of that, everything we do, we were going to wind up killing it anyway.
I see, yeah.
And then putting the breezeway in the front of it, we're going to cut off all the, all the sun to it, and cut off its water resource.
I see, yeah.
We really, we talked about trying to relocate it, but when you look at it, it's not in the best of health.
Oh, okay.
Also, there's one limb that's on it that's, that's dead.
Okay. I did a drive-by today, it looked like it had a nice canopy, but I didn't look close.
It does, I mean, it, it does, and it is a shame.
It is, yeah.
We've kind of gone through and we've talked a couple different ways about trying to save it.
I'm sure.
They're really, you know, and the breezeway's long enough now, and trying to bring it around now, have it come into the front of the house, it's just a little, doesn't look right with the, putting it into the house.
Understood. Okay, any other comments from the board? No, that's it. Alright, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like us to prepare a draft resolution for your consideration at the next meeting, though?
Thank you. Have a good night, Ms. Massey. Yep.
Hi. Your wife's not Italian?
She, yeah.
She is?
She's the best, she's the best part about it.
Oh.
My son's.
I'll tell you what, I don't really think, my husband does all of it.
He does all of it.
Oh my god. I, I don't understand it myself.
No, yeah, yeah. It's, that's, that's my father. He's got a control over his.
Yeah, as I said, there's no, there's no.
Yeah, so, yeah, now, this is, so this is 55.
Yeah.
This is the advanced way.
Yes, yep.
Are you said what about this?
I'm glad that they did that, because it was all paved.
Hi, Brian.
Hey, good to see you. How are you?
So this is the Duchess Contracting Corporation's site plan?
Yeah, I don't seem to have heard of this one before, but we're back again. So we took some input from the last meeting about positioning buildings and green space, and try and fit those design elements in there, getting an efficient site. Looking at specifically stormwater, you know, in our, our last iteration, there was a lot of underground chamber storage for stormwater, it'll do get pricey, and we do have some groundwater out there. So what we wanted to kind of look at is trying to reshape the existing stormwater pond to make it bigger, meet current DUC standards, and see if we can transition a portion of the site from, you know, chambers to using more of a DUC weapon or pond type of base. So we showed separately, just for references, you know, this pond area we're here. And then what we tried to do is have an efficient site, two buildings, three stories, 27 units each building, so we're still at that 54 mark, combination of 12. So what we tried to do is, you know, fit that town center concept where it's building in the front, parking behind it, and then having some of the lanes, the islands in the center, so it's not a sea of asphalt. And then transition to like a green space past the parking lot, in between the new road that would create the, the town center, the design concept, following the master plan. And then again, trying to push, you know, since we're creating this, this new road in here that lead to the parcels to the south, again, carry that same concept where pushing the building up front, the parking behind, and Dewey had, positioning the building here, putting the parking off the side and behind, we get away from, you know, the large retaining walls that were in some of our previous proposals. So, from a classing standpoint, we actually put shovels in the ground, trying to make sure we connect it not like we do this. This is kind of what we came up with. The biggest thing that we have here is a shift in the entrance. You know, the entrance is, is looking a little bit further down, and actually coming down up to this, this property line that they're a little bit closer than what we previously showed. And what that allows us to do is make, you know, stick this building in front, where you really get, you know, into that town center cuts and going from the road.
How far back is that first building, Brian?
This one here.
Off the road, yeah.
Well, off the, off the, off the property line, you're 15 feet, off the road, around, maybe, maybe 30 feet, maybe.
So I, I'm confused how they're getting, oh, I see, is Bishaw Lane being used?
We're, basically what's happening, and what we've always shown, there's going to be an improvement. You know, once you come up to this intersection, we have this 90 here, there will be the access to Bishaw from across the property line, let's say to the north. We've always kind of shown that concept, but, you know, there will, there will be a realignment of Bishaw.
Yeah, it's not on this one.
Brian, you're not going to like me at all.
I know I'm not, I mean, you're not, you're not going to throw something at me here.
I think that an issue that needs to be addressed before anything goes any further, and it's whether it's this project or anything else on 55, is traffic with the state.
And we have a track, we have a track analysis.
I think, because I think that 55, to accommodate any development in the lawn area, is going to need, need to be widened, and is going to need turning lanes for traffic flow. And I can't, I cannot understand why we would want to go much, any further until, until that issue is addressed, and something concrete is, is in place. Because that's going to have an impact on that first building that's closest, closest to the road.
Right, so this is the beginning step of that process, so before I go to DOT, I got to make sure that this board is okay. So for purposes of this meeting tonight, is to generally talk about the layout, positioning of the road, positioning of buildings, green space concepts, and stormwater management. Then, my next step is to, which we had engaged with is Tolliver's Engineering. You know, for, based upon the analysis that they have done, and we have this analysis provided almost a year, year and a half ago, is with this configuration, a left turn lane would not be required. And obviously, we will update that report with this new configuration, and they will work with DOT. But we do have that in mind, they have been engaged. We just want to make sure at this point that this board is relatively comfortable with this layout. If we do require a left turn lane, this building could be shifted, and if there is going to be a left turn lane, the property line would be a taking, so that property, our property line would be pushed in. So we would just, all we would do is carry that same concept, is if we have to push this property line in 10, 10 feet for a DOT taking, that same concept is going to carry. And we do have the ability to push this back, we do that in the green space here. So there could be, you know, there's going to be a shift, it's going to be right there.
Mrs. Crane?
What was the comment you made about the state and the left turn lane?
With, with this configuration, their preliminary analysis, a left turn lane would not be required.
That would be center, the center, yeah, so people heading, yeah, towards Poughkeepsie, yeah, westbound.
The state?
Yeah, the state hasn't officially commented on that, because we didn't take it much further with the board here, because we had other issues related to water in the sewer, because we were trying to exceed the amount of gallons that we were authorized. Now we've backed off of that, we're kind of back to stage one, but with the fruit path forward is make sure the town is okay with the layout, step two DOT.
I'll buy into the layout, but I won't buy into the state.
I, I'm very pleased to see the incorporation of green space. It'll make this project much more pleasant. You're doing 27 units per building. What's the square footage?
I believe they were 900 to 1,100.
And what, two-bedroom?
Mix of, of ones and twos.
Okay, and how many parking spots do you have for 27 units?
I think I wrote it down here.
Yeah.
So I think it's a whole, for both buildings, a 125 quarter, and one thing that goes a 145.
Okay, so you've got ample parking, good, because mostly people have two cars.
And Pete, just following, we talked about the DOT on the, on a previous project that we did with the DOT. We, again, we were at this threshold where the left turn lane was required, but there was a possibility of future development. What we did is, we planned for it, and we had an area set aside for a future declaration of turn lane required at some point. So I'm sure we'll probably be into that scenario here, since this is the beginning of town center. So, again, if the board is okay with this layout, next step is DOT. If they need an additional 15 feet from us, we'll push this back, and we'll just carry on with the same concept.
Just don't eliminate any green space, please.
Now, Brian, because I get, I'm getting confused, okay? You refer to the retention pond as stormwater retention? And we had a prior applicant, a meeting ago, in which, correct me if I'm wrong, it is referred to as a water garden?
That's a different, it's a, it's a type of practice. It's meant, there's several different stormwater management practices. A rain garden is, yeah, a rain garden, a rain garden is a type of stormwater management practice. It's basically a biofiltration type of stormwater treatment system.
A swamp?
No, 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 not at all, actually, it's, they, there's a special soil media and, and layering that allows the stormwater to go through it, and it gets treated and purified as it goes down, and then you normally rely on some infiltration underneath, or an underdrain pipe to capture it after it's gone through the media and being treated, filtered.
Isn't that more attractive and less dangerous than a, oh. Because this is, this could be an attractive nuisance, right along the road.
It could be, I don't know what the, you know, we'll do some infiltration tests and see if there's something that, you know, because at the end of the day, they have to meet
Right.
the state's standards, and the state will want, number one, if you can get it, infiltration. Number two, biofiltration of some sort.
Which would be more attractive?
If you, if your soils aren't conducive to that, then you can still resort to other stormwater practices, like more traditional ponds.
Right, so we're at the low point of the property here in the front, and everything obviously kind of goes up in elevation. So there is some high groundwater in spots in the front, so like if we're switching to a chamber type of system, I'm not going to meet the separation requirements. So I think, in the front, we'll try to do our best at screening and landscaping. It'll probably be some kind of open feature of stormwater management, really. But toward, as we get toward the back of the property, we could probably, if it's by elevation, we'll move a chamber type of system, or if you don't see it, it won't be as attractive, nuisance.
There are some manhole covers already there, right?
Yeah, we would have to play around with those and reposition and design of the terraces.
Right. I don't have any problems with the layout.
Neither do I.
And, and the concept as, as it's shown here.
I think you've done a very nice job incorporating what our concerns were.
I, I think a landscape plan, you know, that would come eventually, of course, and all the side elevations and whatnot.
It's building awesome.
Yeah. But, that's my feeling.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. You know, I, I like swamps, by the way.
As long as they're maintained and you got some depth to them, keep the speed.
But what is, it's kind of a, a concept where it's actually filtering and, and coming out clean on the, on the back end of these retention ponds?
Yeah, there's a, there's a good amount of guidance that we have to follow on DUC manual that.
Who is, who is responsible to maintain that?
So there'll be, there'll be a drainage district, I'm assuming, that would be associated with the site, and be the, be the owner. I don't know where we would go with this, Dan, because at the end of the day, we could probably be dedicating these town roads
Right.
to the town eventually, right? I'm sure there would be some kind of a shared responsibility with them, because, you know, the, the town road would have to be mitigated with drainage, and then our site would have to be mitigated with drainage. I don't know if it's easier that the town, we could make, let's say, the pond handle the road drainage, and then we handle separately the drainage on our site. I don't know how that would, that's some abandoned I could work out, but we would, it would be defined.
So it might be a combined responsibility?
I think so, because that is the low point of the parcel, so we're going to have to put something there, or actually, if there's a road separating it, so I think we could work that out.
Okay.
And no, no retaining wall at the rear?
No, with this layout, they don't anticipate retaining wall.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's great to hear.
But you've left, you've left the road access in the back.
The folks that get off of Bishaw now.
Right.
The what?
Yeah.
If, if future parallel road to 55, the town center.
Yeah, that, this is configured to
I know.
To run parallel in an easter, easterly direction.
In somebody's lifetime.
Hopefully.
Brian, go ahead as you are.
I think I applaud your efforts.
It's not an easy one, but we'll do it. Thank you, Brian.
Joe, it's an improvement over the far one.
Which one is Joe's?
Which one is? He's not.
Oh, I don't know. Peter.
What?
No, it's okay, we're good.
Is that Joe's sound?
Alright, so we got the next one, safe table.
Okay, very good.
Obviously, we're sort of through this project, proceeds may... Um, obviously, we should get through to this project, uh, proceeds, maybe, um, I understand that we need to, uh, raise out some approvals on this one, um, and also that there was, uh, initially with some material on site that was onto the speedway, and based upon what I've read through the applicant, is that the town is, um, gonna require them to at least cap that, that area of not-so-good soil, um, and then talking to the applicant, finding a way to do that financially, um, she would like to, uh, move to grade the parking lot and cap it to asphalt, um, and then that would allow her, hopefully, to, uh, open for business, um, she has a couple of accounts, I guess, we know about, pending her opening, so there is a revenue stream that is available, uh, once she gets open. And then, you know, basically grading the parking lot, paving it, capping it, um, so that water doesn't enter that, that soil underneath, and then temporarily holding it in a sediment trap, um, directly below it and outside of the approved drainage system. The approved drainage system is a chamber system, again, runs the length of the parking lot. Trying to find a happy medium where the town's happy and allows her to open, again, pave the parking lot, let the water discharge off the, off the face of the, of the parking lot area into a temporary holding sediment trap. Leave the construction permit open so that there is coverage, and at such, at such time, she would have to come in, build up, let's say, phase two, which is the approved drainage system. She's getting numbers right now, but are in excess, I've heard three-hundred thousand dollars for the approved drainage system. So, in order for her to cap it and move to the permanent drainage system, it's financially, it's not, um, in her power to do that right now. So what I was trying to come up with is just a, if we could find a happy medium, maybe with a, with a timetable behind it, um, we would pave it, cap it, let her get open, use a temporary sediment trap to hold back any peak increases in stormwater, um, I size a sediment trap based upon volume, you know, we're basically holding the volume of, you know, say, grass in it, in terms of impervious, I'm just taking that volume and holding it in that sediment trap for her to hear storm. Um, I just, I wanted to throw it at the board to see if there was an avenue, um, to try to work with the applicant to give her it open. I know there's previous history, I don't know all of it, um, but basically, what I'm telling you is what I've been told, um, and just give them a chance to see if the board will maintain an avenue of trying to find a way to get her to open.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're new to this, aren't you?
Very new to this.
I remember, yeah, you're right, yeah, 'cause if, if, I do now, I remember the original architect, yeah, because, uh, no, it's good you're on the case, then, quite honestly. So, I remember, though, that the, uh, the cap and the drainage, I mean, we had a scientist here, um, and then, uh, yeah, the fill was, uh, was a problem, 'cause it was free fill, and the guy was indicted and jailed, and it went out of business. Um, but, uh, it wasn't us, though, that came up with the mitigation plan, was it, or the, it was the D E C or the D E P, what was it?
Well, it was, you know, Tailored Environmental put together a mitigation plan that the D E C approved.
Right.
Yeah.
The sci, that, that was, who put that together, the original?
Tailored was the name of the firm.
Of the firm?
Yeah.
Okay. So
The way we'd finally end up having a big, correct?
Right, right.
So she doesn't have enough money to handle the, 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 the final?
Right, so the, the, the phase two is, I believe the drainage bond, um, the, the approved drainage system, which is the chamber system, I believe it's bonded, the numbers, you know, based upon, you know, the increase in plastic is, is crazy, she's telling me numbers in excess of almost three-hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, to, to, to grade the parking lot, to cap it to asphalt, and then move to that, that drainage system, permanent system, it's, it's, it's unfeasible for her right now, so she was, you know, we were trying to come up with ideas where we could meet the intent of, you know, protecting the environment through cap as per the, the approved mitigation plan, um, but also trying to find relief on maybe phasing or staging the implementation of that final drainage system.
So it, it, does she have any projections as to how long it would take for her to accumulate the money?
I haven't ventured that far into the conversation with her yet, 'cause I wanted to introduce this to the board first, um, but it's something we can, maybe sit down.
Well, my second thought, that was my first thought, my second thought is, if I recall correctly, Dan, it was mostly the contaminants were heavy metals?
Yeah.
And that the scientist indicated that they do not travel?
They move slowly through the soil, yeah, that was the
Yeah, slowly, yeah.
Yes.
That's my recollection of that, his, uh, presentation.
John?
Please.
My concern is that this whole project from the start is a bootstrapped, if you will, underfunded. And granted, it's, I wanna, I don't know whether noble is the prec, correct word, but it, it's an, it's an idea with, uh, with merit, but I'm afraid that is, this thing goes along, that it will never be completed.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're not gonna have enough funding to, um, to complete the project as en, as engineered.
Strong, strong point.
What's your thoughts?
I agree with you, Peter. I mean, we're not in the business of subs, of providing avenues to, you know, we need to safeguard the applicant and the town in this, and leaving it open to future improvements without any, and maybe there's a, a time, if you say, in three years it'll be, then you could look at it that way, but we don't know.
Yeah, and that's what frightens, you know, that's what my concern
I agree. So, Brian?
So I'm actually in a concern, um, I think right now, there's an opportunity to at least, the applicant is, is married to the fact that she is going, she has to cap it, so that is a bit of a, I think from an environmental standpoint, we can at least get the area capped, so that's a positive, right? Um, 'cause, I mean, she could walk away, and right now, not to that, it's still a cap, and that's a mess, um, vaguely. Um, so, I mean, right now, we have the opportunity to put that asphalt cap on, at least protect the environment, and yes, the unknown is, is the timeframe behind it. Um, you're correct, and I, I don't know what it would take, you know, I don't know what the revenue stream would be, we, we've got contracts to be playing, once she gets open, I don't know, you know, where that takes us, you know, we come back and do the early updates of where we're at, I don't know how to give the board that level of protection.
So, as an engineer, you have some exposure here, I mean, there was a scientist, there was another firm, it was signed off on by the D E, the, signed off on by the D E C, that plan.
And we're, the plan is to implement that cap and plan.
Yeah.
The mitigation is the cap, you know, and that's what we've, you know, my, where I'm deviating is, um, implementation of phase two's drainage system. Um, and again, that drainage system would treat the impervious, um, surfaces that we created with cap, you know, that's what that's intended to design to.
Well, what's gonna happen in the, to interrupt, Brian, what's gonna happen in the meantime?
In the meantime, I would create a sediment basin off the edge of the parking lot to, to retain that stormwater, it would be controlled.
And correct me if I'm wrong, uh, if you know, I don't know if you remember Pete or Fay, the, the fill that was brought in, right, it was, the, the applicant was completely due to unfortunate events, um, had no idea as to how much fill and how much area that was affected, I'm sorry, Pete, uh, it was affected by, uh, the contaminated soil, they don't even know the spread or the distance that, that soil was spread to or graded to, and the cap for the parking lot doesn't necessarily cover all of that.
I, I think that
Am I wrong?
I think that, I'm not gonna say you're wrong, I'm gonna say that they had considered the amount that was there, and the plan was that they could even push some of that to make sure it's under the asphalt cap.
Okay, yeah.
So there was an engineer that provided some plans with some grading
Yeah.
that the architect didn't necessarily match up to.
Okay.
So that would have to be a consideration also, is working with Tailored, and, uh, Joe Berger had done those plans with some of the, the volumes, you might find that you're gonna have to pick up the parking lot, which might change some of your grades, you already had two-on-one into the sediment traps, I mean, and the, the difficulty for the town is, is that regardless of, of the phasing, that that's a phase-two parking lot, it's impervious and it's part of a speedies coverage, so we have to make sure that the processes that it goes through, uh, meet the D E C's coverage for the speedies permit. And a temporary sediment trap is just that, it's supposed to be temporary for during construction, not for a permanent, uh, practice, it doesn't, it doesn't actually count towards the credits you need or whatnot to count it as a permanent practice. So, uh, that, that's a difficulty on that end, the other difficulty is also that the neg deck was kind of brought in as, as part of that, as, that this had to be done, and as you're now creating that impervious, that's why the chambers were there, because that helped us meet the speedies permit requirement. So it's, it's a, it's a tough situation. Um, there was also a plastic liner of some sort
Yeah.
that was gonna help prevent even further of any potential leachate of that, uh, contaminated soil into the chambers, so we have to do something like that for the, you know, any temporary trap as well, I would suppose, but
Yeah, that's not a reason.
No.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the grading with the, um, intent of meeting the mitigation plan is gonna be important, it was not considered on the, the plan right here, which, not, not your fault, you're using what was given to you already, yeah, yeah.
Is, is it because of the recession and, and bubble in the, uh, material supply?
It, it's a combination of all that, and it's a series of unfortunate events that happened during construction of this, for representation, you know?
Right.
Added up financially.
Yeah.
And, you know, for, I, I think she just wasn't experienced in the field
Right.
and costs just kinda, kinda out of control.
You're kinda struggling along with her, actually.
Yes.
I think I'd have to add that the other, the other concern is that while it is bonded, obviously, it's bonded for too little of an amount now, and there was already an issue of her getting that bond, um, so, you know, it's, the town isn't in the business of finishing somebody else's project.
Right.
We have bonds in place to do that if we need to, uh, but certainly, we, we don't want to. So there, there's a lot, there's a lot of, lot going on with this.
With the toxic, the toxicity and stuff, just adds a whole level of scrutiny.
I don't wanna see a temporary thing.
Yeah.
If that's what the board's doing, I'll take it, it was a shot.
Thank you, yeah, no, yeah, I appreciate the discussion, glad you're on the case, um, that's all we can say at this point, I can't think of another way to, uh, you know, soften the blow.
I mean, it, it almost seems like, since there's a reapproval required, uh, we, I shouldn't say we, the planning board granted a reapproval previously, and it was based on the premise that nothing had changed from the previous approval, so then, once you start getting into changes that could be considered substantive or an environmental impact, you may have to go back into the environmental assessment as well, and so that's something that, you know, you'd have to present to us, and then Craig would have to put some legal advise on that, and then I would have to put some, you know, engineering thought behind that as well, and planning thought, so it's just a very difficult topic.
We also were knocking around the idea of test wells, weren't we, and we, we
Yes.
we, uh, we compromised, and
You did.
because of the cost of those test wells.
You did.
And removed, yeah, 'cause that was part of, I think, Taylor's recommendation.
Yes.
Yeah, so we had already, yeah, tried to compromise, you know, at that point.
Right.
So the bo, the bottom line is to continue to follow the existing?
Yeah, yeah. It's unfortunate, yeah.
And as far as, uh, reapproval, it sounds like we're being told to stay the course, and then, as far as reapproval, you need to change anything for reapproval, or if we're staying the course?
If you're staying the course, I think that's the way to get, to go, um, there was a note that was placed on the plan set, and, uh, I did scan that now, so I can share that with you, but there was a note that was placed on there as part of, of that previous approval, um, that was in relation to the mitigation plan and how it may change some of the grading of the parking lot. So that change was kind of considered in that approval, be, although it wasn't graphically shown correctly. So the, there, there's some minor change, but I, it sounds like the, you know, if you're gonna say that we're gonna just match what we did before, then, uh, that's a, that's an easier path in terms of the, the planning approval process.
Okay. So I'll take your suggestion back to the board.
Yeah, but we're not in the business, because she's underfunded.
Hundred percent correct.
Suffering is not insured supply, is it?
Right.
For any of us?
No.
Okay.
One door closes, another opens.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Well, I think that's all we can do tonight, then, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I think so.
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate your efforts.
Hey, I'm trying to think of someone.
Yes, thank you, Brian.
Yep. This is the Secretary of Health. This is, uh, like, Diagnose Cross from, um, the New Dollar Store.
From where?
The New Dollar Store, Dollar.
They were the old restaurant place.
Yeah.
The slab?
Huh? Across from, uh, Dollar, am I right?
Yeah.
Across from Dollar, the old slab.
Yeah.
Scott, um
Sanchez had a restaurant, The Burn.
The deli?
The what?
Was it?
It was a fruit
They didn't have it, uh, Scott and, uh, what's her name?
Yes, um, Cross.
Cross. So it's that, it's that
Yes.
Parcel, cross parcel.
Who is the, oh, you're the applicant, all right.
Nice, nice looking building.
And you are?
I'm Tara Karas.
Could you approach the mic?
So, I'm Tara Karas, and, uh, yeah, I'm a registered nurse, so I'm looking to open up, uh, the Center of Youth, so
What is it, dear?
So the name of it is The Center of Youth, so my proposed plan is I would, um, you know, right now, like to have seven hairdressing chairs there, along with three pedicure stations, you know, depending on the water and everything, three nail stations, uh, two rooms, so I am also a, an injector, I do botox and things like that, I also do vitamin infusions, I have a medical director, who's also a plastic surgeon and is willing to come and see patients there, maybe, uh, once a month or, or once a week, and I will have two rooms for that, two medical rooms, maybe have, um, estheticians come in for massaging, waxing, sort of like a one-stop-shop, and my favorite part of the whole thing is a salt cave, so I wanna do a salt cave in there as well.
A salt what?
A salt cave.
Cave?
Cave.
Cave?
Yes, so it's, um
Himalayan salt.
Himal, yeah, exactly, Himalayan salt particles are emitted into the air, and it's, you know, it's a nice little relaxing room, it's good for respiratory and relaxing and all that kinda stuff, so it's sort of like a one-stop-shop.
Pete, I can see you in it.
Or, I was gonna ask if men are allowed?
Yes, yes, of course.
Can I get a pedicure while I'm in this? Can I get a pedicure while I'm in the salt cave?
No.
No.
You can just relax in the salt cave.
What's the relation to Scott?
I'm sorry?
You said you were across.
No.
From Scott? No, I didn't hear that.
Yeah. What, excuse me, what's your name?
Tara, Tara Karash.
Karash.
Karash. Thank you, yeah.
Not across from Scott.
Scott Cross used to own, he had a.
A deli, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So, that's, that's the concept down the long first floor. The second floor was an apartment up top floor.
Yeah, there are a one-bedroom or two-bedroom.
What were the gray lines on the rendering? The architectural, I mean, the.
What do you mean, grayed?
Is it elevated?
It's flat.
Oh, I was wondering what.
It's like the site?
Yeah.
Oh, so it's, so what we have here, just to go through the site plan, so that's the concept. So, obviously, the building may have been subject to fire. There's a slab that remains there. We have existing septic tank, fields in the back that exist as well. Existing residential ice raves, like parking lot. The thought process was is to, they wanted to try to do a, be mindful of construction, but do like a pole barn style. So, what you're seeing coming down on it, like the piers, that would be sitting on. So, those are actually the in the ground. So, basically, we're going to have existing slabs in the public, so put the piers on the outside, go down, and basically encompass the slab itself and then go right up from there. So, that's, that's what those, like those are actually supposed to be representation of the grade. So, we'd be, you know, first floor elevation, we'd be sitting right as you see it where the slab is right now. You know, we probably have to play with elevation a little bit as far as, you know, leading energy code. We probably have to put some insulation down from the slab, you know, to create that thermal envelope. But, you know, more or less, that's, that's going to be where you're at. And then, you know, access to the apartment above would be where the existing loading area is. There's a set of stairs down. We were thinking from a park standpoint, you know, the two-bedroom apartment, they could park right next to the stairs and walk them over. You know, working for things like lighting and landscaping, there's some landscaping happening there, but we would obviously add to it. From a refuge standpoint, it's a spa. There's no, it's not an office, it's not really retail. So, the garbage consumption is going to be relatively light. So, we were thinking a couple of roll, like, you know, the standard roll of parks to keep them underneath the stairs because there's really not going to be much garbage generated into this. And then, from a loading standpoint, you know, in an office, not a retail, you know, deliveries are probably fed up, some EPS.
Very small.
Well, you're not going to, you're not going to give a Cisco track or trail right here for deliveries to the salt cave. You know, it's, you know, once it's up and running, it's, it's smaller deliveries than. So, that's why the loading spaces are kind of pushed off to the side there just because we were playing around. We could have put it, you know, where the two spots are next to the stairs for the apartment, but we thought it was a better separation so we don't anticipate a lot of deliveries, you know. So, I mean, things like that we could play around with. But the intent is to refresh the lighting, meet current town center standards, meet the landscaping requirements, meet, you know, park requirements. We're in the process, you know, reviewing board help as it relates to water usage, so they're going to be involved. I think the biggest thing I wanted to hear from the board tonight is layout. As I see, this is like a redevelopment of an existing site. We have a lot of infrastructure that we can reuse. We have hardly any disturbance because it's existing. They don't put a lot of applications in the town. They talk about sidewalks along Route 55. Due to the volatility of large drainage ditch that runs right in front of this piece, since we have existing structures next to us and we can have sidewalk, we provide an easement. I don't know if the board's for or against that. Basically, I would probably just have to come through. But again, just trying to get these thoughts out there and get, get it on the table early with the board. I think the biggest thing is town center, as you know, pushes the building forward. So, my biggest thing is push usually how we make it all up to the community to the town. Can we consider this reuse?
I would think so. You're not expanding.
We're not expanding, but what I, I would say is very.
I wouldn't think so because it's.
Well, if it's in town center.
Well, it's an existing. Yeah, but it wasn't an existing structure. This is, they're replacing something that burned.
Yeah.
I can serve rebuilding in time. We're not in the city of.
The building burned. It's a slab. It's established. I don't know, I'd have to defer to more people with higher levels of expertise than I.
Did you follow them?
Peter and I were just, I was just showing them the location on the aerial, but, you know, the.
It was about whether or not.
At the end of the day, I mean, the, the town center principals are quite the opposite of what this is. But understandably, when you look at it as a redevelopment project and, and the fact that, you know, there are a couple of buildings that are up closer on that side of 55. So, it's just kind of.
I have two buildings on 55. If one of them burned, would I have to get a variance?
No, because within a certain amount of timeframe. Yeah, so it's like a one-year window usually, yeah.
But we did cause Dollar General to get a variance, right?
Yes.
Because we preferred the setback. Because we, we realized that most of the buildings on 55 are setback. And the idea of causing them to meet that 15-foot, 15?
Zero to 15, yeah.
Zero to 15 requirement. It would, it would, wouldn't it change the aesthetics of 55 in the negative at this point?
Well.
To bring businesses forward to 55?
Well, the idea is to create a village. But even if you go into villages, not every building is right on the same mark 15 feet off the road. And that's what creates a sense of character. I mean, if you want, want 55 to be a strip mall.
Yeah, right.
I don't think that's.
That wouldn't look good either, would it?
No, I don't think so. And this was, these, these streetscapes, as they call it, was something that was pushed 20 years ago. And not every property will lend itself to that streetscape concept.
Right.
Personally, I think the fact that they're working on an existing slab that was a building we all, most of us remember. I mean, I don't know. Is a variance necessary in that case? I don't know. A year, more than a year has passed.
Approve the plan and throw it out to the building inspector.
Yeah.
There you go, and they choose, they decide.
Because I wouldn't want to put them through that unnecessary step.
Are you talking about a new variance or?
No, area variance for this front yard setback.
They'd see the same effort?
Yes.
I don't think so. I'd have to think, I'd have to know a little bit more about the aspect of the common surface of this, you know.
I mean, it's a, it's also a compelling argument for the zoning board to consider.
Yeah.
They could, I mean.
You know, there's a reason why they'd be asking it for it to be that way. You know, there's existing park and there's existing slab for the building. There's an existing septic right behind it. I mean, it, there's, there's a lot of sense to it. So, even if they did have to ask for the variance, you know, there's compelling arguments on why.
I think the parking lot is there. It's, is it paved? Is it good?
It is, yeah.
Good shape?
Most of it is decent.
So, the parking lot is there. You'd have to rip that up if you moved it forward. I don't know.
Yeah.
But if a variance is what is necessary, it takes a month and I can't speak for the zoning board.
So, process wise, do I need a denial of, denial letter from the building department to pursue zoning?
Yeah, and what we normally do at, at this level is this would be a coordinated review for Seeker. So, you'd work with the planning board. You could always approach the zoning board for an opinion if you wanted a warm and fuzzy. But we'd also have to advance the plans and everything to a point where a neg deck can be done by this board so it can be referred to the zoning board, if, if that's the path, so.
Questions if they want that building up further?
Yeah, it's, you know, can you rebuild the prime on the same slab without expansion?
And this building isn't that much different than the original.
Fay? I think the precedence has already been set with Station Grill.
Oh, well, that's a whole nother can of worms.
Yes, but the whole idea was, was that it was on the existing footprint.
Supposed to have been. Supposed to have been.
Brian, do you know how long ago the, the building burned?
Oh, 10 years ago?
Yeah, that's.
That's good.
Yeah, probably 15.
I think it's like 15, because I think it was four and a half.
Sanchez was the last, the guy had a little restaurant, cafe.
It was a snowy day.
In big.
I don't remember the time, but it was dark. It was snow. And there was six to eight inches of snow on the roads and 55 was not cloudy. I had the weed plot.
Wow.
Is that, is that an excuse for why it burned down?
What do you think about the big puffy lips?
Part of it, according to my team.
So, we can put in the resolution, no big puffy lips?
No big puffy lips.
Because I, that, that would be one.
There will be no big.
One, one negative, yeah, I'd want to make sure that, you know.
And vitamin infusion?
Yeah.
And everything all in one, like a one-stop shop for.
Sure.
Yeah, right in town. And there's nothing like that. I mean, I've talked to many different clients of mine and stuff and they say that's a great idea because otherwise they all have to drive to Kipsey or they're driving down to Westchester. There's nothing, there's nothing here.
I have, I own a pharmacy in Westchester and I get a lot of calls about whether or not I want to, I want to add a medispot to my pharmacy, which I find odd, but.
Yeah, well, right now, we order from Florida.
Yeah. Interesting.
So, it'd be good to just drive someplace to get it rather than be shipping.
Okay. So, what kind of guidance can we give them at this point?
They're going to put an application. The building inspector is going to determine whether he's going to deny it.
Great.
And then go from there, right?
And then, and then you'll figure out whether or not. You have to go before the zoning board or not, yeah.
And I commend you on the project. I think it would be a big, a nice addition to be.
It would. I agree.
I don't need Botox.
No, I don't either.
Not yet.
It's a salt cave though.
Okay.
My wife likes my lips the way they are.
Well, you know, they have to come here no matter what for site plan.
Right.
Just so that's clear.
Yes.
Right.
All right, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice meeting you.
That's nice. That's quality stuff.
It's a good business. She's in the room.
Very nice. The building.
Got the last one.
Let's do it.
Okay, so Nicolosi finally sold the property, yeah?
We're closed, we're supposed to close. I've heard the end of the month. I've heard.
So, I heard too.
That was Nicolosi still?
Oh, still.
God.
Love to get rid of this one. I'm sure we all would like to get this one moving.
Right.
But we're closed, I'm making my orders. Making my orders this week. We already talked to the health department. They're ready to sign. So, everything's going to be from a my orders standpoint. We're going to put the my orders on the reader, the reader home thing. Because what there's, what's going to happen is maybe the closing, there'll be exchange of the property and the regers will sign the plan. So, we're discussing that name change. This is anticipated, the plans off the health department this week. Now, Dan and Craig are working on the legal line of things. So, I, we're, we're closed, but I think this is the last one we're going to ask.
Hopefully, you make it to close, that's all. They say there's a 50/50 chance. In the commercial industry. So, you're asking for an extension, right?
Yeah, I, I prepared a draft resolution that considers one 90-day extension, which would bring the date through September 22 of 2023.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to grant an extension to September, did you say 22nd, 2023?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thanks, Brian.
So, we move to adjourn?
So, just, just so, we never had a fourth person come on in here. So, the approval of the May minutes, you'll probably just want to put that on next month's agenda as well. And then, probably approval for June meeting minutes as well.
Do they have to be, really formally have to be approved?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, got you.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting and thank the secretary.
Don't look at me.
Well, we need it.
I like the air conditioning.
Oh, well, you could stay here.
You can second.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will.
Thank you.